Evening, everyone. Toby's funny saying, we should have our meetings in smaller, more relaxed room, maybe sofas. So, um, we will officially open the meeting now and we'll open the public hearing for the sewer flat rate increase of ten dollars per quarter per unit. This was recommended by our accountant or treasurer, I believe. Accountant or treasurer?
It's accountant.
It's accountant.
Treasurer's Jeff.
To offset the cost for the sewer, usually at the end of the year, we've been taking monies from the, uh, the fund balance to, uh, to balance the sewer budget. So, um, the ten dollar per quarter should bring us up to either, either even or maybe a little, you know, or we might have to dip in a little. I think it's, uh, anticipated that it'll cover, cover the costs without going into the, uh, the fund balance. So, that was it on that. Um, so we'll keep the meeting, we'll keep the public hearing open for, you know, for a while or till the end. If anyone happens to come in, we can discuss that. If there's anything from anybody here on, on that, we can field those questions.
How much money is that? Do we know exactly?
The total, what ten dollars is or what?
It's twice a year, ten dollars?
Four times a year.
Four years, okay, that's right.
And I think there are about seven hundred units. Don't hold me to that, but it's at least seven hundred units. So, it would be twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Every quarter?
No, it's twenty-eight thousand dollars for the year.
I'm not good at math.
Yes.
That's why we have Murray, that's why we have the deputy mayor.
They got him a carpenter, right?
Yeah.
Oh, wait.
Well, you have numbers on-
And on the tape.
On the tape, you know, it's a thing, even broken down. Okay, um, we'll go into the resolutions adopting the two thousand eighteen nineteen budget. First resolution, uh, number twelve dash two thousand eighteen general fund budget. A resolution adopting a general fund budget for fiscal year commencing on June first two thousand eighteen and ending on May thirty first two thousand nineteen, making appropriations for the conduct of the village of Coal Spring Government and establishing the rates of compensation for officers and employees for such period. Whereas this board has met at the top, at the time and place specified in the notice of public hearing on tentative budget and heard all persons desiring to be heard there, thereon. Now therefore be it resolved that the tentative budget as amended and revised and as here and after set forth in the amount of two million two hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars is hereby adopted and that the several amounts stated in the column titled tentative in the tentative budget but hereafter referred to as adopted in schedule one are hereby appropriated for the object and purposes specified and the salaries and wages stated in the salary schedule of the tentative budget shall be and are hereby fixed at the amount shown therein effective Tuesday, April twenty-fourth two thousand eighteen. And further be it resolved that the tentative fireman's service award tax levy as amended and revised and as here and after set forth in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars is hereby adopted and the amounts stated are hereby appropriated for the o- object and purpose specified and are hereby fixed at the amount shown therein effective Tuesday, April twenty-fourth two thousand eighteen. Mayor Morandi moved the foregoing resolution which was seconded by trustee Murphy. What is that?
We'll amend that, that's, that's incorrect.
Yeah. What is that doing?
So, you're going to make a motion?
Yes, I will, I will make a mo- yeah, a motion to accept the, uh, resolution twelve two thousand eighteen for the general fund balance, or budget, sorry.
I second the motion.
Roll call, Mike.
Uh, trustee Murphy is absent. Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Valoto?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
Uh, yes. Resolution twelve two thousand eighteen is officially adopted this twenty-fourth day of April two thousand eighteen by a vote of four to oh with one absentee. Uh, resolution number thirteen two thousand eighteen water fund budget. Resolution adopting a water fund budget for the fiscal year commencing on June first two thousand eighteen and ending on May twenty, uh, May thirty-first two thousand nineteen, making appropriations for the conduct of the village of Coal Spring Government and establishing the rates of compensation for officers, employees for such period. Whereas this board has met and at the time and place specified a notice of public hearing on the tentative water budget and heard all persons desiring to be heard thereon. Now therefore be it resolved that the tentative water fund budget as here and after set forth in the amount of six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, uh, seventy-six dollars is hereby adopted and the several amounts stated in the column titled tentative in the tentative water fund budget but hereafter referred to as adopted in schedule F one are hereby appropriated for the objects and purposes specified and the salaries and wages stated in the salary schedule of the tentative water budget, uh, shall be, shall be and are hereby fixed at the amount shown, uh, therein effective Tuesday, April twenty-fourth two thousand eighteen. I will make a motion-
Yes.
-to adopt the resolution thirteen two thousand eighteen water fund budget.
Second.
Uh, trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Valoto?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
Uh, I vote yes. Trustee Murphy is absent. Resolution thirteen two thousand eighteen was officially adopted on Tuesday, April twenty-fourth two thousand eighteen by a vote of four to oh with one absentee. Uh, finally, resolution number fourteen two thousand eighteen sewer fund budget. Resolution adopting a sewer fund budget for fiscal year commencing on June first two thousand eighteen and ending on May thirty-first two thousand nineteen, making appropriations for the conduct, oh, can we, we can't do this until we hear the resolution, I believe, right? Because I think the budget includes the ten dollar for-
No, the budget does not include that.
It does not include that, okay. Continue then. Resolution adopting a sewer fund budget for fiscal year commencing on June first two thousand eighteen and ending on May thirty-first two thousand nineteen, making appropriations for the conduct of the village of Coal Spring Government and establishing the rates of compensation for officers and employees for such period. Whereas the board has met at the time and place specified a notice of public hearing on the tentative sewer fund budget and heard all persons desiring to be heard thereon. Now therefore be it resolved that the tentative sewer fund budget as here and after set forth in the amount of five hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars is hereby adopted and that the several amounts stated in column titled tentative in the tentative sewer fund budget but hereafter referred to as adopted in schedule G one are hereby appropriated for the objects and purposes specified and the salaries and wages stated in the salary schedule of the tentative sewer budget shall be and are hereby fixed at the amount shown therein effective Tuesday, April twenty-fourth two thousand eighteen. I will once again make a motion to adopt resolution number fourteen two thousand eighteen sewer fund budget.
Second that motion?
Uh, voting trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Valoto?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
Yes. Resolution fourteen two thousand eighteen is officially adopted this Tuesday, April twenty-fourth two thousand eighteen by a vote of four to oh with one absentee. Thank you, Michelle, for all of your work. Okay, moving along here, we have correspondence, a number of letters. First is from, uh, Jason Angel, email. I'm Mayor Morandi and trustees, I've been working with a group of volunteers and plans to increase biking, walking in our community after the Phillips Town Community, in our community after the Phillips Town Community Congress process. As a way to build a bit of public momentum, we were thinking about promoting a bike day in Coal Spring in June, potentially creating a bike loop safe for families for a day on village streets. Do you have time over the coming weeks to talk through a bit? Or would it be best to make a formal ask at an upcoming meeting? Thoughts?
Well, as you said, we have no idea if the request is to close some streets and given the activities going on in June, we need to know what those streets are.
We need more info, yeah.
So, I think we need more information from Jason.
Well, I'm gonna ask him to come to a workshop?
Sounds good.
I can do it, or ask Jeff to-
Oh, yes, Jeff, to get that.
Okay, next is a letter, uh, from one hundred forty-two Main Street regarding water meter reading. Might take me a bit, it's a free hand. Dear Jeff Vidicovitch, Vidakovich, all right. As for our conversation today, we would like that our water meters on one hundred forty-two Main Street be read manually since Mr. Howard Broad has health concerns. We could give you quotes by-
Quarterly.
What is that?
Quarterly.
Oh, we could give you quarterly readings. What's that?
Last week's.
Last week's reading was blah, blah, blah. Thank you for your-
Understanding.
-understanding with, I should add, you read it.
No, no, no.
Howard Broad and Winifred, whoever, the-
Dole, Take, Drake.
I'm not sure how his last name is pronounced. How is, do you know how Winifred's last name is pronounced?
I believe it, uh, oh, I'm not certain of the other fellow. Howard Broad, but I'm not certain of the other guy.
I, I just don't know.
Anyway, um, I guess there was, the conversation was that, and there might even have been another letter, that there was health concerns because of the, the waves coming from the meters, is that right?
Radio frequency waves.
RF.
Yeah.
In this one, he just says health concerns.
So, initially they were installed, um, he requested they be moved, um, and Greg Phillips went to his residence and, uh, Howard showed them where they wanted it moved, or one of the couple, um, showed them where they wanted it moved and they did so. And now, I believe he had disconnected it himself by cutting it, um, and is now requesting that they do it manually, so.
Should we do that?
Can he do that?
Do we read them manually anymore? Is that an option?
Yes, we, well, we're still reading some meters manually because the, um, cellular endpoints have not yet been installed. I'm gonna say they're less than twenty-five in the village.
Right.
They're less than twenty-five throughout the water area.
No, what I mean is offering them, us reading it in person, an option.
Well, that's what we're, I think that's the question that we have to address.
So, no one, but the only reason the other ones are being read is because they haven't had the endpoints put in yet.
Right.
Not because they don't want one, want them in their house.
Except there might be one exception to that.
Yes, there might be.
Not in yard and street.
Yes. I, I tend to say Howard has been a good merchant in the village, he's always been very interested in maintaining Main Street looking well. Um, I say let it, let him do this, this is obviously of deep concern to him. And I say we, I would vote to make an exception.
Well, there's one thing, uh, just cutting something that's village property is of concern to me, regardless of his health issue or belief in it. I believe his reasoning, I, I don't know if he has any cell phones or anything else in the house, which from my understanding, uh, radiate way more of these waves that seem to be, uh, concerning to him, so. And I, and I don't know if there's any evidence whatsoever that, that any of this is actually factual or that it's factual this would cause any kind of health concern.
Well, if it were proven, it would, it would really be bad for the cell phone issue.
Yeah, that's true.
But there are, uh, there's studies out there that radio frequency is not good for you, but, uh, this is not a lot.
That's if you stand in front of it all day, every day.
Exactly, but it isn't. So, that, that, if that's not what he's getting, then, I mean, I understand he's concerned about it, but-
You may think that's not what he's getting, he believes that it is impairing his health.
But it, it's the, uh-
So, it is his state of mind that says that this is a problem for him.
Well, I understand that.
And I, I'm-
So, what kind of precedent does, that does, anyone in the village that has a state of mind, we follow their request?
Yes, I would say for this one, for this one, Howard has been a good resident of Main Street. He has attempted to keep his shop and in front of his shop as good-looking as possible. This is of concern to him and I think we need to, to be a little more sensitive.
Well, I think there should be a cost associated with it.
With cutting, well, certainly we can do that, we can certainly impose a, a meter, well.
We can have someone go and read the meter, I'm not having him call in the meter reading.
No.
I don't think that's a good precedent.
I think he should pay for the repair and removal of the meter and he should pay the hourly fee that it takes somebody to come and read his meter.
Yeah.
Every, every-
I agree.
-month and just have that tacked on to his bill.
So, the, the, the destruction of property, I think is a separate, I would separate the two, we would bill him for that and if you want to charge him a fee to have someone get into the shop on a quarterly basis-
Yes.
-which may be a problem.
That's, well, that's not our problem, that's it.
Okay, so-
If he wants this-
What if the meter gets put outside so we can read it outside?
I think-
That the meter's inside and there are-
No, but I don't like one of those reader, outside readers, they can do that, right?
Don't have any more.
They don't make those anymore?
We don't have any anymore.
We don't have any of those.
The, the outside meters that had been installed are all gone. So, we will send, I'll draft a letter for your signature.
What do you, what do you think, Steve?
I don't know. I, uh, it, it's, Greg says it's like a text message, that's the amount, that's what goes out, so I understand that he's disturbed by this, I feel bad for him, that, that's, that these are bothering him, but, or the idea that's bothering him or whatever, whatever it is, but, you know, it's, this is how we're doing it now, I, I don't, uh, I don't know.
Lynn?
I'm opposed to it.
And what, would you like to see happen?
I would like to see him pay for the damage to our village property.
Yeah, I agree with that also.
And he should provide some proof that it's actually affecting his health, directly affecting his health if, if we're gonna have, you know, the entire schedule of our water department change around every quarter so that, you know, we have to provide this extra service for a person, over and above what we do for everybody else. I, I don't know, I think it's a dubious claim.
What if we have him pay for-
And lots of people are good Main Street business owners and do the same thing.
What if we had him pay for the, you know, the cost of, you know, say an hour or half an hour to go read the meter?
You know, I think, I think it sets, it sets a dangerous precedent, you know, that anybody can make any kind of dubious claim that, you know, this thing is, the garbage collection at so-and-so a time is giving me migraine headaches every day. So, we have to somehow or another accommodate every single person who's got some sort of drep'd up ailment based on something we do. I think it sets a dangerous precedent and we're aiming to be more efficient and effective and have more accurate readings and that's what we need to do to do it.
Okay, the one thing I think we, we maybe should do, we should ask a attorney if, if they indeed, if we can mandate people have these, I don't know, I would think that you can, but-
Can have one.
Can have meters in their house and that they have an option or that we have to give them an option. Is that something that the village has to do?
I'll follow up with John. But that, that doesn't get, then there's the issue of getting meters.
Of what?
Getting meters for inside the house.
What do you mean?
We had a cellular meter.
Yes.
He believes it's harming his health.
Yes.
And, and that may be more how he thinks, Lynn, than how he feels. Uh, he may believe it's doing that to him and so, so-
Yeah, and there are people that believe vaccines are harmful to people and-
Some might be right on that one.
So, um, I'll find out from John if we can make an exception. Because that's what we're talking about doing, a cellular meter from those-
Well, I'm sure we can make an exception, I don't think that's the question, I think the question I'd like to know is, you know, if the village-
This is the only option.
If this is the option that we're giving and someone cuts our line and says that's not how it's gonna happen, you know, if they have the right to not have that meter or have it read manually.
Okay.
Okay, I mean-
I, I, I agree that the destroying village property, he has to pay for that, that, that I totally agree with, the, the issue is what, what options do we have?
You know, and I also, I agree with Lynn that, you know, some people like, you know, when garbage, you know, was it one in the morning-
You gotta learn to love that.
And it's waking people up and they're not getting a good night's sleep, then, you know, I think they would have a case on, a valid case on that also, that your day isn't spent, you know, restful or you didn't have a restful night, so your day isn't productive.
You know, I would be a lot more sympathetic if he had come to us in person and said, "Look, I really don't agree with this, will you please accommodate me?"
He did.
No, he didn't, he damaged, he damaged village property first and then we start getting these letters.
He did come, he did come to see, I believe he came to see John.
But he came originally and asked to move it and, and-
And it was moved.
-specified where it was moved and then that turned out not to be so, that's actually-
Yes, yes, he definitely has a problem with having a cellular meter within his property.
Well-
Which by the way is not his residence.
Uh-huh.
It is only his place of, it is, is his place of business.
So, he doesn't own the building?
He owns the building.
And they don't live there?
They do not live there.
Oh, even more-
They live in Garrett.
So, it's just there?
No, he runs the second floor.
So, that's when he's at work only?
Okay, let's talk to our attorney and then I say he definitely pays for the damages and, and go from there.
Yep.
If we have to give him an option or then I think it's gonna cost somebody to, you know, to leave work and go there and I'm not having somebody read their meters.
No, you, you understand that we have someone that does go around and read the non-cellular meters once a quarter.
The few that have a reason, they have to.
No, you could argue with that, they have a valid reason.
I, I don't think this is a valid reason.
He's, he's not saying.
Okay. Moving right, right along on that one. Is a letter from boat club, um, the Commodore, Mark Patnella, would like to run a fence, a six-foot fence along the back wall, right now there's the, well, not a wall, there's the rock, I guess, natural cliff behind, um, to the south of the property, um, which is now lined with tires and other, um, things that they use for their, their floats. Um, and they want to run a fence along that, kind of covering up all of that mess, which I think is, might be attractive, you know, might enhance the, uh, the look of the property. Um, the fence is to match the pump station fence, um, and they were going to stain that, so, um, that's one issue, the other, or the, or one request, the other is the gate, but we'll just stick with the fence for now. Any, any comments or thoughts on that?
I think it would help, that, you know, it would improve the look of the place.
I agree. Okay, so, um, I think we're all kind of agreeing on that, so I'll, I'll tell Jeff, or, oh, let Matt, or Mark know that he can move ahead with that. The, uh, second, I know there was a problem with the gate, um, where it brought this up and I think, I, I don't know, it was an issue. They're asking if they can install a gate, um, it would be a manually sliding gate, um, match, I believe, what's the fencing that's there, the lower fencing, um, they just have people coming in and out of their property, um, even when they're working, they had one, one episode where someone was walking underneath the crane actually while they were putting, putting their floats in, so, um, I don't know, thoughts, I don't remember what concerns were about the gate at one time, I thought there was one, maybe not.
I, I think that the, the, the concern was that the boat club with the big sign that they had, uh, made a very non-welcoming appearance to people in the area and the, the request was to make the boat club look more welcoming, more open to people. And what Marcus has tried to-
The people that wanted to join or?
Just people who wanted to be in the village. What Marcus pointed out, that having the, the opening that currently exists makes, uh, creates safety hazards for those people who don't wander and they, they walk in, they, they, they are trespassing and creating safety concerns for themselves and potentially others. In addition, uh, he, he talks about the situation with the porta, porta potty, uh, becoming, uh, the, the place to go.
Right.
Harden the phrase, um, below, uh, the railroad tracks and, uh, people get very angry when they're told that they sh- that, that this is not a public facility. So, the, the idea was the gate would, would, um, dis- discourage people or discourage people from wandering in. And what he talked about was a sliding gate, um, which, which, I can't remember what they had before, did they have a?
I don't know what they had, did they have a rope?
Well, there's a rope down there now, you're going down there now.
So, for or against?
I would not be opposed, what he, what he talked about, it was, it would slide from both sides and they would only keep one side open, creating, um, a, a path for vehicles to get in and out, to, to give more of an appearance of, you really don't wanna be, you really, this is not a place that you'd wanna just wander around.
All right.
But it would match the picket that's there then?
Yes, yes.
That'd be nice.
Steve?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, Lynn?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I do think we should have a little stipulation, they said, they promised to stain all of the fence.
They weren't explicitly did.
If we, if we purchased the stain, which we did, and then the only thing that got stained was around the boat club, they're gonna do the rest of it.
They got us, dude.
And they did get us, so I think we should stipulate that, that has to be done.
I'll ask Jeff to draft a letter for your signature.
Okay. Okay, what else we got left here? Lynn, you're up.
Oh, I move to approve the batch of bills number forty-five seventy-eight for a total of one hundred thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-nine cents.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, batch number four five seven eight?
Second, you got a second add.
Oh, I'll second that, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Scoot for the minutes, so bear with me for a second. Approval of minutes, uh, March twenty-seventh, uh, two thousand eighteen, the trustees meeting, make a motion to accept.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, on, on page four, um, Michael, do you wanna follow me or do you want me to leave these for Jeff?
I'll see if I can keep up.
Okay, on page four, or the heading is authorized mayor to sign memorandum, first bullet point, trustee Early suggested using less up-to-date available cost by October fifteenth, left parentheses, rather than comma.
Ah. Yep.
Okay, um, go down to correspondence, last bullet point, highway department pickups will continue for AN, A-N.
Got it.
That's it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is, meeting of April third, thousand eighteen, uh, board of trustees meeting. I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Discussion? Anything?
No.
No, uh, good job, Michael.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, probably, yes, April tenth, trustees meeting, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. On the first page, under police department report, Michael, the second bullet, there were one hundred and twenty, re- remove the dash. Hundred and twenty tickets issued, which is what you pointed out.
Remove? I don't have a dash in my draft.
Oh, okay, that's good.
I have, I have one in mind.
You too.
All right, so we just want, there were space, one twenty space tickets?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
On page four, it's standing at the top of the page, the first bullet point.
Hang on, excuse me. Page four, yes.
Repairs to the two thousand sixteen Ford F three fifty hydraulic line were, I think, repaired. Period.
You wanna say repairs to the truck, blah, 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 were repaired?
No, repairs to the, the, uh, the two thousand sixteen Ford F three fifty hydraulic line were made.
Okay.
Period, and then the new sentence, repairs to this missile spreader, spreaders were completed.
Okay.
Okay, and then, um, in the, uh, uh, let me see, Jeff was going to make a change to the minutes that are attached to our, uh, okay, in the minutes that Jeff handed out, he's made a further change to resolution ten dash two thousand eighteen. In the third resolved area, the date should be changed to May first, as opposed to April twenty-fourth. This is for the public hearing for chapter sixty-four.
Okay.
And Jeff has already made that change in the copy that we have in our handouts. And that's, that's my comments.
Okay, so I will make these changes and send it.
To Jeff.
To Jeff.
So I will make a new motion, a motion to accept for ten minutes with those minor changes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Well, you had already made a motion and Steve seconded it already.
All right, so if, if we make the changes though, then how, how should that be done? I mean, should we?
Okay.
Got it.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't know how we should do that the next time. Should we add, maybe discuss first and then do it, with, then we don't have to get into that? Yes?
Sounds good.
All right, next time I'll ask if there's discussion before we bring it up, although it's kind of not, not in the water, but still. Uh, let's see, I have one little thing here, it's, uh, from Jen Zoric. It's a hello, Mayor Randy and trustees, and Jeff. On behalf of the tree advisory board, we'd like to invite you all to be guests of honor at the village's Arbor Day ceremony this Friday, April twenty-seventh at four P M. It will be a short twenty-ish minutes. We hope that the mayor would like to be master of ceremonies again and read a, a short few sentences. And any others of you that would like to speak or read would be, of course, welcome to do so. We will begin the ceremony in front of the village hall at eighty-five Main, and we will walk over to forty-three Garden Street, which will be the site of the new tree planted for Arbor Day. On the way, we will walk past a few of the trees on our new, about to go live, uh, street tree walking tour. We'll have local Cub Scouts on hand to help mulch and new tree, mulch the new tree, and Girl Scouts will be decorating the tree and around town, et cetera. We hope you can join us, Jen. And tomorrow night at the chamber meeting, Jen will be honored, the James Lovell Award.
That's wonderful, that's great.
And, and also other, uh, other local businesses, um, ones for longevity and, I forget the others. That's new business, I believe. That, that's tomorrow, we had Dutch's Manor at six o'clock. Cocktails, seven o'clock, ceremony. Mike C. at the cocktails. Uh, anything else?
Uh, yes, um, the, the, the public hearing is still open.
Oh, yes, we do have that, yep.
Before you do that, um, you may remember that we received a letter, a little on the late side, from, uh, uh, Mary Ellen O'Dell and Barbara Scutimara about the senior center. So I, I called Barbara to find out if the name had been cast in concrete yet, or how, whatever the phrase is. And she said currently the thinking is it will be called the Friendship Center of Phillips Town, which is consistent with the other friendship, the other senior centers throughout Putnam County. They're all called the Friendship Center of whatever. So, it, unless we have any strenuous objection, she thinks that that's what it will be, seems fine to me.
Are the other friendship centers also community centers, or are they just dedicated to senior center?
I don't know the answer to that. Does anyone know?
And what other activities are happening? Friendship doesn't actually say that it's a senior center. Sounds like it's a, whatever you want it to be centered to me.
Sounds friendly, huh?
It sounds friendly, yeah. How about the Friendly Senior Center?
Um, if we have any serious recommendations, I'm very willing to go back to that.
That wasn't serious. There was one, but I won't say, and it was from, it was, it was from someone, it was, it was funny, that.
So, okay, so, okay on that, and, um, I also asked.
Okay, meaning what, we're gonna say that, that we're fine with that?
That we have no objections.
I have an objection. If, if, if the other, if the other centers are, are, are community-based, then other activities can happen there. And I think it should have senior center in, in the, in the title. That's what it was, that's what it was billed as, that's what everything, all that.
All the hoopla was.
Hoopla, aggravation, assaults, um, fun and games, all was about a senior center for our beloved seniors. So it should be a senior center.
If the other centers are exclusively senior centers, then I think we would, we would accept it.
Okay.
Okay, uh, the other thing I asked was whether, um, the, uh, the second topic.
They can send us a couple of dollars instead of sinking another three hundred thousand into the senior center? Maybe they would like to chip in and give us like a, maybe five hundred dollars more for our parade, maybe couple of thousand for bathrooms and garbage and. I don't know, that was just, sorry, I was just like, kind of upsetting when they can find three hundred thousand dollars for one project to sink more money into. And we ask for a few thousand dollars, we get nothing.
We get seventy-five hundred dollars.
I know, and we asked, requested ten thousand last year to up it so we would have, you know, could expand and take care of things better. And that was denied, with silence, I believe.
The second topic that I asked her about was the, um, offerings in the center, what they would be. And she said that she has some working people who are on a working group, um, to try to define those. So if anyone here would like to participate in that working group, she would welcome, uh, the participation. So, is anyone interested in doing that?
Excuse me, Marie, this was to do what?
This is to define the programs that will be offered to seniors.
Ah, okay.
Uh, so, right now, in addition to, um, the, the lunch program and the socialization that occurs before, during, and after the lunch program, they are considering, um, nutrition, education, health counseling, blood pressure readings, talks by local physicians and pharmacists, transportation and shopping assistance. So if there are any others that are felt that would be helpful for the senior population who will be using the Friendship Center in Phillips Town, um, is she?
Four, four hours a day?
She would be very interested in having that participation, so, um, I will say that.
That was to Barbara or Mary, uh?
To Barbara.
Hopefully they eat fast so they can fit in other projects, and they're four hours that they're allotted, and they're friendship center. That's not too friendly, I think, setting a time. There's Jason Angel.
How are you?
Sorry, how about? We can, we can, no, we can go back to, back to the road, so, we're, we're, I'm fine with whatever. I mean, they've, you know, ignored everything that we said before, so why would it matter now what we asked or said?
Well, you are being included now.
I know, we are being included, yeah. That's nice. It's friendly. You could've done it at the Friendly Center. Friendly's was the ice cream place, went out of business, though, that might not be good.
So Jason, we saw, we have your email, and we were wondering if the date had been identified and if there were any street closures you were looking for?
Actually, we were looking for.
What's the overall?
We were looking, yes, the overall picture.
The overarching plan.
Overall picture.
Yeah.
Plan, uh, and I hope you got the note that I was gonna be here seven forty-five, sorry. Oh, okay, I, I emailed it to Fran.
You're early.
All right, all right, um, so this is just part of the Phillips Town Community Congress effort, and it's from the Bike and Walking Trail Committee. Um, and so we've just, over the last couple months now, been meeting to discuss how to increase kind of walking and biking in Phillips Town. Um, and so we're actually, we're, we're kind of looking at a number of options, or kind, we're kind of, what's, what are some of the initiatives? Looking at, uh, a map that identifies all of the existing trails in Phillips Town, walking trails, and how to potentially connect loops. Um, we've been talking to Basque Bell, their, Basque Bell's interested in finding a way to connect Basque Bell to the train station. Um, and they're, they've been looking into that, uh, but so this was just a proposal to try to build some public participation and momentum around biking and walking. So we're just thinking about trying to organize a bike day in Cold Spring, uh, potentially in June, June Saturday, June sixteenth.
Not a good day.
Yeah.
Not a good day.
Not a good day, okay, this is why I come to you, these are all very pencil, in pencil plans.
There's a craft beer festival that day. I don't think we'll.
Isn't it Father's Day also?
I don't think we'll.
Take your dad, take your dad on a bike and grab a beer. No, that, okay, so craft, I've seen signs for that. That's gonna be probably very large and crowded.
Unless you did it in the morning, the craft beer festival doesn't begin until the afternoon.
No, I'm sure we'll just pick another, that's probably a good idea, not that. Um, so maybe either the previous June weekend, or the, you know, what is that, uh, what is that previous Saturday is, could be a potential?
Jim night.
If, if you all don't see any other conflicts with that. Well, I need more information before we get into conflicts. Okay, yeah, so, so really, we're coming here, I mean, we don't have a set loop. We've looked at, you know, we've thought about some options, but we wanted to get your advice and see if you were first of all, open to the idea of a bike day, open to the idea of closing down potentially, um, you know, streets that would do as little kind of damage to the flow of traffic as possible. So for example, we were looking at, um, that Campbell Avenue loop down to the Foundry Trail and the Foundry. I haven't actually biked it yet, the Foundry Trail, maybe someone here has the Foundry Trail going down to the train station. And then the train station, there is that road that cuts through the.
You'd have to ride along the platform of the train to do that.
Is that right?
Yeah, 'cause there's a ramp there that, uh, that gets you to the sidewalk out by the, uh, main street there.
So that sounds like not a good.
No, I mean, it'd be cool. Have bicycles riding on that one. But you can go through the woods around there, but it's not, it's not really passable very.
Okay.
Very easily.
Okay.
I think one of the things we'd have to look at is whether or not that's a date that the, uh, bicentennial has identified for the West Point Foundry tours. Because closing off Campbell Avenue would mean that people couldn't get to the West Point Foundry.
Uh-huh. There's so few streets in this village, it's hard to think shutting any of them down on Saturday.
Have you considered doing something, um, yeah, I, I know, and it gets so busy on the weekends that, um, one thing that just kind of popped into my mind that might be kind of fun is to have, kind of like, a bicycle scavenger hunt, only have them, have the different places in, in the different neighborhoods where people, you know, where kids can ride their bikes around. Like, you know, the whole Parrot Street section, and then there's the whole Mountain Avenue section. If it was more, I think it would be more on a weekend, community oriented, if it was done in, in those areas. You know, you could go through Cedar Street Spur and bike through, through the woods there, that might be kind of fun.
Yeah.
And, you know, instead of just having people kind of aimlessly, you know, riding their bikes around.
Yeah.
Give them a project to do.
Yeah.
You know, like, that kind of engages people.
I mean, I think it's a good idea, I mean, the, the focus of the idea was really just to see, I mean, if, if a committee is gonna task itself with this Herculean task of trying to find a way to connect, I mean, the, the goal is to connect Cold Spring Train Station or area with Garrison Train Station, and connect Desmond Fish, to connect these kind of major routes. And people have said, look at nine D. We know that in two thousand and six, a large group looked at nine D, and it was, and I mean, that is like, you know, the Fuhr Trail took what, eight or nine years? I mean, that's a huge task. People have said, look at nine. But that is the official bike lane in New York State through here, but that's like a dangerous nightmare.
That's scary.
Um. Nine D isn't. Nine D is a dangerous nightmare as well. Uh, and so, you know, we've been exploring actually old carriage trails, um, that link between here and see how far that gets us. But I guess our whole purpose with this bike day is if people have said that they care about being able to bike more, then we want them to come out and show kind of public activity in biking on a called bike day. Because it's such a large endeavor, it would need a lot of people to support it, to really find a way to do something like this. And so whatever sort of a, you know, and we just want the day to be a day where as many families as possible come out and, and we can see the visible kind of mutual support.
Or if you did like a bike parade that only lasted forty-five minutes or something.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
To like, then you could get a bunch of people and go one place and then at your destination or something.
You know, like a down, down Main Street or, or something. Yeah.
I don't know.
I think biking in the village is gonna be really difficult on the weekend.
It's tough, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's.
Especially in summer.
You think maybe a lot of resistance to any sort of street closures on the weekend? Would a weekday be? Cause a weekday would also potentially work, we wouldn't have a lot of kind of weekend, you know.
Yeah, weekday in the summer after the kids are out of school.
Uh-huh.
Might be kind of a fun thing to do, you know, 'cause a lot of the kids are just kind of aimless during the week, too.
Mm-hmm.
This town is tough for, for what you wanna, what you're describing, you know.
Mm-hmm. I mean, there could maybe be a lane, or the, the side, not the lane on nine D that could be, you know, something could be done with. So, you know, the parking lane, um, going on nine D through the village, but the streets are really difficult. Um, and then you have Howe Lane, which might be attractive, but I mean, that's, doesn't get any use hardly. But that's a loop that you could add to. Yeah. Which also loops into other trails.
Yeah, that whole section up there is, uh, better than the, thinking of shutting the village down or, or.
Above the light is definitely.
Around the school.
Would be more of a chance.
Just what, what Lynn was saying, no.
Okay, you mean like from above the light down three oh one towards Nelsonville? Are you, are you thinking would be a better? Anything above the light's not gonna be as, as tough as it is, in, in the village, I think it's impossible. Yeah. Really. Yeah.
Well, I mean, how many people you thinking, I didn't even, we didn't ask that.
Uh, you know, I think our, our game plan would just be to put it out to all of, you know, both schools and the PTAs, and do some kind of just local outreach to community organizations, maybe put an advertisement in the newspaper. It's hard to project how many people that, that could be, I mean. And it's like, kind of, I think with the, what kind of bikes are, you're talking, if it's like young kids with smaller bikes, that's one thing. If it's like people with their, you know. Geared bikes. Yeah, bikes might not, might take you two seconds to get to a, a loop. I don't think, I don't think the idea is not like the super gearhead bikes, it's more of like, you know, family, like people biking together and just the whole event being, if you want more biking, you have to come out and show support. if you want more biking, you have to come out and show support. You have to come out and show there's a demand for it. Um, but that's good. I mean, I was not coming here with a fully baked loop. I was coming here more to seek advice from you all and like hear these ideas. And it, it may make sense if, if you all think that, uh, some sort of a loop in closed streets in the village would be a bad way to go.
If you did it in February, it wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah. Then, then maybe we'll look at, you know, maybe a loop through, through Nelsonville. Yeah.
Your, the participants would be riding in the roadbed, correct? Not on the sidewalks?
Yeah, we would, we, I think for it to be kind of safe and open, we would hopefully have them, people be riding in the roadbed. Yeah, yeah.
You, you've seen what Main Street is like in a, on a Saturday or Sunday. But it's just dangerous to have little ones riding. I'm thinking a five or a six-year-old riding in the roadbed.
Yeah.
Cars open, car doors open in front of them, they swerve around.
Yeah.
It's just.
No, we certainly weren't thinking Main Street. I mean, I, I, I had a, the initial idea about Kimball Avenue. I, I had not been on that Foundry Loop to see if it went to the train station and then through that kind of, um...
Well, people do walk it.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I haven't.
I don't think it'd riding. I don't know where you'd start, or it would be very short if you just went there.
Maybe a half mile from.
Then you're right on Main Street again. You'd have to start on Main Street.
Well, you can't, you can't really get there on a regular.
Yeah.
There's a...
Some stairs.
Well, there's the ramp that they put there on the, if you're on the northbound side of the tracks, which is where you would be if you got the Foundry. There is a, like a wheelchair facility-sized ramp that goes up to the platform, which you could ride up, but you'd be on the platform. Otherwise, it's just all woods down there. And then there's the end of Boulevard, right there, and then that's all woods down to the tracks. There's really, and then you're, you're behind the apartments there, Forge Gate and all that. And then there's the, the, uh, the only way that you could go would be on the sidewalk on the platform.
Okay.
I don't think that they're letting you do that.
That's doable.
It could be, but you'd have to ride bicycles on a train platform, a whole bunch of people. I'm sure that the, whatever they're called, the A T A.
A T A.
I don't like them. They give me a ticket.
Just you, you just.
Sorry, I go off track.
These just seem to attract, attract tickets. I don't know that you can ride a bicycle around the pillars.
No, you couldn't.
That support the, uh, the overhead.
It would be tight, and if a train was coming through an express, you'd forget it.
That does not sound, yeah, that does not sound like a.
No, there's no way they would let you do that.
But you could walk your bike around it, um...
Then you're on Main Street again.
Yeah.
At the bottom of Main.
What you could, it's very secure to see. I don't know that you can put a bicycle in the elevator.
No.
That would...
But from, if you're on Main Street, so once you come out on Main Street, you could go up Long Terrace.
You could cut through the For- Forge Gate.
You can cut through Forge Gate.
That would be one way to get through there.
Where it says private property, keep out this main gym.
I'll bet if you asked them.
It's a private, it, it was a sign. But you could, you could get through there.
Uh-huh.
Forge Gate, which takes you out to Long Terrace and then back to Main.
So, on this little fact-finding mission that I'm on, so, no, you know, above the light potentially, if there was a loop that we worked out to propose to you all in the village, it sounds like avoiding a weekend, doing a weekday in summertime and avoiding Main Street. Obviously.
Yeah.
All right.
I think that's probably the better, better choice.
All right.
Yeah, crossing nine D also, if it's part of your loop, would be a problem.
A challenge, yeah.
You know, it's, there's trucks and, you know, commerce taking place on nine D.
Yeah.
A lot of vehicles.
Yeah.
Could we at least, you know, if they were gonna, um, if they were gonna do that like above the light, could we designate, you know, just for a few hours on a particular day, no parking in the, you know, where people park, usually park cars so that, you know, it's kind of a de facto bike lane?
Where is that?
Well, I was just thinking if they were doing some kind of loop up three oh one or up, up Main Street above the light. You know, maybe having one side of the street, no parking. So we make, you know, temporary bike lane.
Yeah, I think that could be do. I mean, we just, I think one of the things you'd need is a lot of cones to, to really, to do it. And if there was a need and it was a special day, then maybe we can get a crossing guard. Not expensive, but, uh, for a few hour, whatever, that would help if we had to get across the Main Street. Um, but...
Would your, would your kids be able to make it up Main Street, starting from Chestnut Street, Maris Avenue, up the hill? It's a bit of a climb.
Well, they may have to do the walk of shame when you have to walk. You parrot yourself and get off the bike.
What you can do is go over to Bank Street. Uh, so you go along nine D.
Yeah.
To Bank Street, um, head east on Bank.
Okay.
Get off of nine D, and then you're in the area of the village that Lynn was just talking about.
Yeah.
So you've got Parrot Street and Parson Street.
Yeah.
Pine Street.
Yeah.
Holding Avenue.
Okay.
And then maybe if you, if you had a crossing guard to go across three oh one. And then you've got Cedar and, um, Cedar and Locust Ridge and Orchard and...
Howe Lane would be good to, you could loop around Howe Lane, and there's a lot of things you could do on Howe Lane itself.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good idea.
And is there a name for that trail that goes along back there?
I, James Pond.
The one to James Pond?
James Pond Trail.
It's called Little Scout or Scout Trail, I think.
Oh, is that what it is?
And some of that land has been sold. It's not private property.
But there's still a, there's an easement for access through there.
Okay.
Their friend Michael.
Yeah. He planned to build it, but then they had a baby, so it slowed down, yeah, the process.
Um, is the, there's a trail that comes in off of, um, the Mason's, um, the Mason property.
Yeah, I think that might connect over to Howe Lane.
Yeah, I think it goes, I think it goes to James Pond.
Yeah, that's the one I was thinking of. Jimmy Lovell told me it was.
But I don't know that it's bicycle-capable.
Mountain bike.
Okay. All right, so that's, if we went there, is that still all village?
No.
No, it crosses, went into, it crosses, is it gonna be half village, half Nelsonville?
Yeah.
Half village, half, intermediate, if I'm allowed.
Soon as, soon as you get off of Cedar Street, almost instantaneously, you're in Nelsonville.
Okay.
When you're going toward James Pond. James Pond's in Nelsonville.
Okay, okay.
And then...
Okay, that's great. You all made the plan for it. Well, so we'll, we'll bring that back, and then if it's okay, if we, if we have a route proposed, can we come back then and propose that route to you and get, get a follow?
Yeah, sounds good.
Cool, thank you. You heard the C C A got approved by New York State? Has, has Jewel been, can we get in good contact with you?
Yeah, we just had a meeting last.
When was it?
Oh, good.
Last Wednesday.
Okay, good.
About two weeks ago.
All right, I didn't know if they were really communicating.
No, no, they are. They're gonna do a bunch, a whole bunch of community outreach, uh, going forward.
Cool.
Well, planning, it's in the planning stage for them. They hired an outside guy from, uh, yeah, I met him early on in the C C A process. I forget his name.
Chad?
Yeah.
Yeah.
His company, yeah.
All right, cool. Okay, thank you. So bring back a bike loop proposal to you?
Yeah, call the village clerk and set up, and he can set up like on the workshops and our meetings. Yeah, he'd be the one that can set that up for you.
Okay, cool.
All right.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Good luck, you.
Anything else? Yes, I gotta tell us anything else before we get to.
I'm buying our new space.
Like, eh, make a motion to, uh, to close the public hearing on the sewer flat rate increase.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. So do we need a vote? Did we already vote on that? Yes, we did. No, we didn't.
What?
We did not vote on approving the increase.
Do we have that in here?
No, I don't think so. I, I don't know that we need a resolution. If you would.
Well, why don't we just make a, you know, a motion then?
Okay, so Dave, you wanna make a motion to approve the...
I will make a motion to approve the increase in the sewer flat rate, ten dollars per quarter per unit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Now you wanna close the meeting?
Why don't you do that, Marie?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
So I make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lynn.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it? Yep.
What's the sewer flat rate now?
Um...
Is it six, three or four?
Yeah, I had that data. Let me see if I can find it.
It had to be six, 'cause we were thinking of raising it to eight or ten, and eight wouldn't have covered the, the cost that we needed ten. Well, I'm gonna get six.
I'm so sorry. And, and...
Be real quiet.
I'm so sorry. Michelle, Michelle discussed that, uh, um, a meeting that she attended where we did the twenty-two.
Two minutes.
I'm looking. Uh... I'm not seeing it in, in.
Jeff, go ahead.
I, I can't remember.
Hold turn.
It was a, it was about a ten percent increase. So it's gotta be in the seventy, eighty dollar per quarter now. Let's see if I have it in my notes.
Can't answer your question, sorry.
Stumped, stumped, stumped the panel.
It's secret.
I didn't hear a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Yes, we have.
Oh, that was the last one?
No, no, that was the public hearing.
Public hearing.
No, and then Marie did a, you made a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
No?
Second.
'Cause you were telling me now it's time, Dave, to do this, and I said, why don't you just do that, Marie? And then you said, and then the question.
I closed the public hearing.
So what, you're asking me about the hydro?
It goes to public hearing. You guys voted to approve the flat rate increase, then Marie made a motion to close the sewer public hearing.
Right.
It's about to close tonight's meeting.
If it did, you wouldn't know it, 'cause it's gonna be inside a building.
Dave made a motion.
We did already.
Okay, and who seconded it then?
Dude, I believe you got enough people. You got a warrant. I'm not gonna do it again.
Okay.
I, I seconded. He made the motion.